I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Synodine Meeting for Thursday, May 4, 2023, to order. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ethan, if you please call the roll.
President Ballerain.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Pollack.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Clerk Sol also present.
Thank you. President's report tonight, I have one thing on my agenda, and that is Presidential Proclamation for Bike Month. Whereas the Village of Riverside will promoting bicycling during the month of May 2023, and whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation enjoyment of Riverside's scenic beauty, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Riverside and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, commuting events, charity events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas Riverside's road and trail systems attract bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefit. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Riverside, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution congestion, and wear and tear on our roads. And whereas the village president's office, schools, parks, and recreation department, police departments, public health districts, hospitals, companies, and civics group will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2023, and whereas these groups are also promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy our local restaurants, retail establishment, and cultural scenic attractions. And whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations, safety education, in the effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. And now for, be it resolved that I, Joseph Ballerain, Village President, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Bike Month in the Village of Riverside, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance and witness her of I have set my hand and affixed a seal of this Village of Riverside this fourth day of May 2023. Thank you. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I have two items this evening. One is very exciting. London Ice Cream Shop that's located at 38 East Avenue will be opening and having a ribbon cutting Thursday, May 11, at approximately 3:15. So if you're available and can come out and support the new local business, that would be much appreciated. My other item is, on behalf of myself and village staff, I want to thank Trustee Hannan for all the work that he's done over the past four years. There are so many projects that have been completed, but I wanted to note a couple. As I know, different economic items are of great interest, and financial items are of interest of his. We created an economic incentive policy. We've done economic incentive agreements over the past four years, creation of two additional business districts. We acquired 43 East Quincy and completed the updates on that building, in addition to also acquiring property for the purpose of redevelopment, and also completing the Swan Pond Path, and that's just to name a few. Also, during his tenure, we have received over $3.2 million in grants as well. I just want to say that we appreciated his perspective, myself and staff, his approach to problem solving, and support over the past four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move on to residents' comments on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items this evening? Ads on the agenda, so you don't... Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Sol.
Approve voucher lists of bills, May 4, 2023. Approve Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, April 20, 2023. Approve Village Board of Trustees' executive session meeting minutes, April 20, 2023. Review and File Parks and Recreation Board regular meeting minutes, February 27, 2023. Review and File Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes, March 22, 2023. Review and File Historical Commission regular meeting minutes, March 20, 2023. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside, and a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois requesting that a certain parcel be acquired by the Village through the Cook County No Cash Bid Program.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience or anybody on the board would like any of these items to be removed? Hearing none. I would like to ask for a second motion and a second, please.
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Marshazga. Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Move on to Department, Boards, and Commission reports. Today, we have one item, and that's a Gears to You 2023 update. Assistant Village Manager Monroe.
Good evening. Although they provided a quarter-one report that's found in your packet, I figured I would highlight just a couple of things that have taken place over the last year with Gears to You. It's a license for space allowed by the village for use of the train station, and it's fitting that you've announced Bike Month as May, especially related to this business. They joined us in the brick-and-mortar location last spring. In their first year, they have established rentals, partnerships with nonprofits. They've held rides and events for bicyclists, new and experienced, and in their report, they're highlighting that they are hoping to double their business in 2022. So with some peaks and valleys, but it seems to be working out for them, and they're continuing to be a great part of our community. So if there's any questions, I'd be able to offer them.
Any questions? We actually have Peter here tonight from Gears to You. Pete, would you like to get up and say something?
Sure.
Great.
Thank you. So it has been, it's been one year, so it's exciting for me to, it's been one year. The business has been fantastic. We've done so much more than we ever expected in the year. Rentals have been, they haven't really started this year, but we've already had reservations for a few days going on this year with tandems. I think I have five or six tandems right now. And tons of, the rental's actually interesting because what we're doing is we're renting vintage bikes. We're the only bike shop in the country that rents vintage bikes, and I thought it would be appropriate for, you know, historic village. It probably wouldn't work anywhere else but here, but it's pretty cool and a lot of interest. I was at a meeting this morning for different partners, different people I know, and they were all very interested of how it was running. But the tandems, I have an event coming up next weekend for a tandemonium. So if you don't have a tandem, I know some of you do. Some of you are looking to have some tandems. I have like five or six now that you can use also. So show up for tandemonium. But you guys have been great. It's been fantastic having, I think I've worked on pretty much everyone's bike in here except for Alex, maybe. We'll get you there. But it's been fantastic. We just love being in the village, and it's, I just want to thank you all for the year, and hopefully many, many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Happy one-year anniversary.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to pending business. We have no pending business. We move on to new business. An ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois related to requisitions, purchases, and purchasing authority. Director Johns.
Good evening. Before you tonight is an ordinance amending the purchasing sections of the village code. The major highlights of these changes include an increase to the bidding threshold from 20,000 to 25,000 to mirror the state statute change from 2021. Posting of competitive bidding has also been updated to require postings on the village website instead of the local paper, increasing the requirement to create a purchase order with three quotes from $2,500 to $5,000, creation of a preferred vendor list, removing the sections detailing emergency purchasing from the police and fire sections of the code, and pointing them to the general emergency purchasing requirements, and general cleanup of code, including moving to gender-neutral terminology. Are there any questions?
I have just a couple of questions. Number two, posting the notice in competitive bidding in the local newspaper. We have to post in the newspaper when we bid out contracts. How much does that cost us? Now, we have two types of contracts. Ones that are state-funded or grant-funded that is statutorily we have to continue to do, and the other one is like our tree contracts or things like that. How much of the discretionary do we...
This varies from year to year, but this would require any project over 25,000 to be bid. Last year, we spent about $8,000 in publication fees. The amount for, that would not fall under that state bid threshold was approximately $140.
Okay. So what we're saying is, the bidding process that is discretionary is about $140 to something?
It's not discretionary. It's over 25,000. It's just not funded by state projects, which also have that requirement of posting in a local newspaper.
We're not talking about a lot of them?
Correct.
Okay. I had an interesting conversation today with the owner, president of the Landmark Newspaper, and he made a very good point that, you know, he went to the transparency and all this stuff. But the point he made to me was, you know, the small-town newspapers are getting smaller and smaller, and fewer and fewer. Big-town newspapers are having a hard time surviving. And I started thinking to myself, what, you know, the service that the Landmark does for us is a big service. And I think that the amount of money that we pay them on a discretionary basis, because we always have to pay the other money, but I think it's our way of helping promote and keeping our local newspaper alive. I mean, I just think it's, it was a very good point, one that I didn't think of, and I appreciate him calling me to tell me that, because I do think that has a very, would have a very bad effect on this village if the newspaper should close. I personally read the newspaper, but I read Riverside's. I read Oak Park, River Forest. I read the village press, and I read Maywood's, just to find out what's going on in all the different villages. And the information that I glean from it has been very worthwhile. So that's the only thing that I would say about that.
I just know from working in a field that requires publication in a state newspaper for several, for different grants, people, like if we've been publishing them in the newspaper, they're not going to be used to looking for them on the website. And I don't know how we would get them to be in that practice. So I think with a newspaper that's small, we would have a greater impact. I think that it's fine. I think that the way we do it is fair. If you look through the paper, you can see the notice, the public hearing notices. I just don't want to cut it off and then just have people expect to look at the website when they might not know, you know, that they should go to the website.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Do we have a consensus that we agree with that fact?
Yes.
Yeah, we do. I do.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's the only thing that I had to say about it. So I think we would continue to publish our bid contracts, even the discretionary ones in the paper.
Would you like to accept this ordinance tonight with that change, or would you like staff to re-present it at the next meeting?
Does anyone have any issues with any of the other parts of this?
No.
Okay. If not, then, yeah, we'll pass it tonight, and then you can just make that change. Okay?
You want to vote on this?
I'm coming. So I'd like a motion and a second.
Motion is made.
Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Marshazga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Second thing is an ordinance of the Village of Riverside including adopting a pre-approved vendor list. Ms. Johns.
Good evening. The preferred vendor list was made possible by the previous ordinance just adopted, attached as the list of 2023 vendors.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none. If I can have a motion and a second?
Motion is made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Pollack. Clerk Sol.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is an ordinance amending various sections of the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to permitting, regulating, and deployment of small wireless facilities, utility noise, construction of utility facilities, facilities in the right-of-way. Ms. Monroe.
Good evening. So we have in place provisions in our village code and ordinances, as well as in approved design standards for small wireless facilities, as approved in 2019, were the most recent updates to the code. However, state law and various case law decisions have changed some requirements related to the small cell antennas and related equipment. And based on the fact that the village recognizes its community character, we have a national historic landmark landscape architecture district status, and we want to protect our right-of-ways, not only because they host our public facilities and utilities, but also because those right-of-ways contribute to that landmark district status. And so by incorporating provisions in the code, we are doing our best to protect as much as we can legally protect based on federal standards and requirements, what we can do on a local level to have any wireless providers adhere to specific design criteria that also meets those federal standards. So I will just note that they cannot install any of this equipment on our gas lamps. I'll reiterate that. And a section of our code changed in 2019 regarding our preservation commission requires that, as part of their responsibilities, a review of these wireless facilities. So we've listed the changes proposed to the code in your packet, as well as design standards, which is the following motion or item that mirrors those ordinance changes. So I'll take any questions.
Seven.
So is there anything in the ordinance about placement?
Yes. So it has a variety of standards in placement. The idea is to locate any of this equipment on existing utility poles. So we would need them if they cannot locate them on an existing structure that the post would be made of metal, it'd be round, it would be, you know, similar to a street light. I'll note that the pictures are just as a frame of reference as to what the equipment would look like and kind of the area around it that the code references.
So this is on a parkway?
Correct.
I don't want this. So we don't typically have poles in our parkway, so does that mean probably we won't look like this? We probably won't see this?
It's not, it's not something that we could prevent unless it doesn't meet our standards, right? So by putting in place our design standards, it's trying to locate any new construction of a post between property lines. It's not going to just bisect someone's lot. Ideally, it would be located close to intersections where there's not this, you know, interruption of a full street. You know, there are certain requirements that we're trying to get them to adhere to in order to continue to protect that national landmark status.
And all the placements have to go through preservation?
They do. So we do have a time requirement that needs to be met. So as soon as they put in an application, they're, we're required to review with not urgency, but within a certain timeframe to meet those standards. So what we would do is provide that information also to preservation so that they're aware that this is proposed, and so that they can weigh in. The Director of Public Works also has a say in observation of what they're proposing, to make sure that it's not conflicting with our utilities underground or other things that we could envision as a challenge. Part of the ordinance also identifies a pre-meeting, essentially, is recommended, to avoid some of those challenges that, you know, we'd really want to prevent, you know?
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do.
Yes, Chris Evans.
Have we been approached?
We have not yet been approached about installation. We're taking guidance from the best practices that have been happening in other communities around us, and learning from that, and addressing them ahead of time in our code so that we have more support to benefit Riverside.
Thank you.
5G deployment, Riverside's going to be challenging at best because of our gas lamps. Other communities have the traditional electric lamps where they can just add the equipment on, whereas to deploy it in Riverside, you're going to have to run the electrical and all those pieces in order to make it work.
Mr. Hannan?
Yeah. Back in 2019, when we discussed this, this is in response to the state of Illinois change in law. And one thing we focused on is a preservation of our landmark status, and to make sure that any towers that were built or any poles that were put in place were consistent with that landmark status. So I think you guys have captured this, and I appreciate what you're doing. I just want to make sure that that, you know, notwithstanding the potential legal challenges that we've taken, as strong a stance as we can to protect our landmark status. And, you know, appreciate that you don't have it on the gas lamps, but, you know, number one, I thought in 2019 when we talked about it, have a structure that was consistent with the gas lamp structure. So it blended in, and it looks like, are we getting away from that, or?
We're trying to adhere as best we can to some of that design criteria. If we are mirroring, in general, the design standards are saying, you know, you're not going to use a wood pole, you're not going to use a, you know, a boxy-looking structure, we're trying to, as closely as we can, recommend that they match our, the aesthetics that are in town. I mean, we can certainly provide them that feedback and request that they do that based on our design standards.
I appreciate staff being proactive about this. I know that this is something that's happened in Annesdale, right? We're just trying to...
Thank you. If I can have a motion and a second?
Motion is made.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Evans. Any further comments? Hearing none. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution approving the revised and updated written design standards for small wireless facilities. Ms. Monroe.
Our conversation is generally the same as what I just went through. If there are any specific questions related to the design or aesthetics that we are hoping for.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. If I can have a motion?
Motion is made.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollack. Any further comments? Hearing none. Mr. Sol?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution and proclamation declaring results of the election of certain municipal officers in the consolidated election held on April 4, 2023. Clerk Sol?
This resolution is acknowledging the results of the April 4 election. Jill Mateo will be sworn in as a village trustee at the conclusion of this meeting, and trustees Kristin Evans and Alex Gallegos will be completing another term.
Thank you.
We'll start with the swearing-in of trustee Jill Mateo.
Two years ago, President Sells swore me in, and I felt that was an honor, since we had worked together for so long. And I want to uphold that tradition and swear in the new trustees, because we're going to work together for a long time.
Oh. Motion to approve the election results.
Can I second that one? Because it gets me off the board.
Ethan, could you please call the roll?
Never mind. Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bob, did I do something wrong down there?
Excuse me?
Did I do something wrong?
No, you didn't.
Not yet.
I did.
I'm sure.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Jill Mateo.
I, Jill Mateo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Village Trustee.
I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Trustee.
For the Village of Riverside.
For the Village of Riverside.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans? Thank you. Please raise your right hand.
I, Kristin Evans.
I, Kristin Evans.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Village Trustee.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of the Trustee.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Alex Gallegos.
I, Alex Gallegos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Village Trustee.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Village Trustee.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Last thing on our agenda tonight is the trustee reports and the C4 updates. Do I have any reports remaining?
I will defer until later in the month, given the C4.
Any other reports on commissions or anything? Okay. Hearing none. I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the Board of Trustees' Synodine Meeting.
Motion to adjourn Synodia.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second.
I will second.
Second by Mr. Hannan. Ethan, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.